This not timely matter. We can create a future show. I need this minute to run out. Hi guys, welcome back to my channel. Today is April 8th. I am whispering because I'm in the library, but I'm in the bathroom. I'm still whispering. I have a class at 6. It's like 5:20 and I tried to come to the library to get. I have to do a speech in two days, so. I'm gonna hurry up and practice. So yeah, I came to the library. I actually came to the library earlier too, but. I didn't get no work done. I'm just sitting here scrolling on my phone procrastinating, but I'm gonna try to. Practice for this speech really quick. I have no cards. I wrote down like what I need to practice. So yeah. I found a really, really quiet place, so. Let me hear. I can practice real quick. Single time is 5:26. I usually take comfortable. Take my shoes off, but I gotta hurry up and go. I get 5:40, so. To practice. So yeah. Let's practice. So this. I'm gonna take my shoes off just because of the fact that I love to get comfortable. My speech is on social equality. Too sharpness. In New York, I have this one. Cause them cramps. Kick him off. But hopefully y'all got me. Should've been more informed here. Just wanted to do that. Just taking audio to connect. Hopefully I can get this time. Another timely matter. So I originally did my, um. I originally did my rough draft, but like I said, I wrote some on my card. So this is my rough draft. This is my rough draft. See y'all can see. And she created this. So yeah, I'm just writing no cards on my, me. I'm writing on my no card so I can have like a better shorter view like when I'm giving my speech, so I don't have to read the whole thing. So. Yeah. I have three so far. I need one more. I actually think I need two more. So. I will discuss the. I will discuss the potential social equality. Today. And how. I should've brought more no cards. Looks like I'm running out of space. How. All have equal opportunity. Cause if I write on the back, it's gonna bleed through the no card. Didn't bleed through. People impacted by social equality every Sunday is not simply something we hear about in the news. I've seen from many studies how different opportunities and common education may completely affect our person's destiny. Also, I point this first and now these problems in the person's society. Okay guys. I feel like I have a really good speech, but. I wanna shorten it and write on these no card. I'm really trying to talk in the library. This is crazy. Okay, I'm gonna put this in a time lapse. Let's speed this up. Okay, I ran out of space. On my no card. So I'm gonna come back tomorrow and finish. Our speech is, no it's our speech Thursday. Today is Tuesday. And yeah, so I wrote a good amount of stuff down. That's what I needed. So yeah, this should be good. I'm gonna finish tomorrow though, cause I think I need like, I'm gonna do like two more cards, cause. Like I said, I'm trying to lower, well, like lower the, um. The rate of how much I had to talk, so it's supposed to be five minutes. So yeah. My next class started at 6. It's 5:42. I'm gonna head over there. So yeah. This will really come in handy. If you've got cramps, go get you one. So now. I'm gonna hit another class. And then. I'm gonna get some food after this. So yeah. Should I not be with nothing? But I go to my next class. I don't really wanna go. It's my. My old class. I think this is our last class session. I have two, um. Two lab reports to turn in, so. I was gonna say it's not that cold outside, but. I'm on the, I'm on that. What y'all think? Is this the way? Go this way. I actually should've sat outside. It's not that cold. But yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I was really supposed to vlog earlier. But I just didn't pick my camera up, like. There should be so much stuff. Like some days I wanna pick my camera up, some days I don't like. But. You gotta do what you gotta do. I mean, here I am. I'm gonna keep getting videos out. Yo, and you know one thing? Um. Well, I'm not going to run away. But what was I finna say? Um, some people say it's not like this. So you know, maybe like clock it. It's not like this, bro. I've been doing this the whole time. It's like this. Like, why didn't I know that? Yo, look at this. Like I say, all over my campus. Really bad, really, really bad, really, really, really bad. I'm gonna try to make this vlog go long too. I was supposed to, nah, I'm not gonna lie. I was really supposed to start vlogging. Yesterday, but. Yeah, I started my cycle and everything. So yo, girl, I've really been. In a funk. I was trying to get the word out, but yeah. In a funk. Y'all see my hair? I'm breaking out. This is just too much, y'all. But. Ay. It is what it is. Actually feel good. I'm not gonna yawn. Feels good today. I'm happy this is my last. I think this is my last bio class. I don't even know. She said it was though. I'm not mistaken. Our last bio class. Have two lab reports to turn in. One from last week and one from the week that I missed. So yeah. We got that done. Um. Yeah. To my next class. You know one thing? I've always wanted to ride one of those scooters that people be riding on campus. There's be so many past people. Like damn. Don't even be saying excuse. Don't know what that's about. But yeah. I'm just, yeah, it's not fair. Like always. Um. What was I finna say? What should my next hairstyle be? Let me know. Let me know some. It's so pretty over here, bro. Like. Y'all campus ain't coming like this. I ain't gonna lie. Hold on, let me move from Connie's streets. It just really ain't coming like this though. I'm just saying. But yeah. I look like a little girl with these little two puff balls. I've been thugging the two puff balls. For two weeks. I don't care though, but. My hair gonna get done. Don't so worry. Don't so worry. Yeah. I'm gonna talk to y'all when I get out of this class, cause this shit three hours. Sometimes she let us out early though, so. We gonna see what that's about. If I get done early with my lab. It's from 6 to 9, but if I get done early, we gonna go get some food and, oh my gosh. Really? Interrupting my vlog. But yeah, we gonna go get some food and then I'm gonna go home, cause. Why not? Go home, get in the shower, put my PJs on. I was supposed to wash Sunday. I didn't wash. Like I said, I've been in a funk, so. I'm gonna get them clothes washed tomorrow. Washing on the Wednesday in the middle of the week is crazy, but. We gonna do what we gotta do. So yeah, I'm gonna talk to y'all later. Yeah, this used to be my old class. I've been missing it sometimes. Just a little bit. Uh, just a little bit. But yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna talk to y'all then. Bye bye. In the middle of me brushing my teeth is absolutely crazy. Hey guys. Back to my channel guys. It is the next day. Today is April 9th. As you guys can see, we did have a fire drill. For whatever reason, they always doing it and then like in the middle of me brushing my teeth is actually crazy, but. Yeah, I have class at 1. I'm gonna get ready for that. First, I'm gonna take this trash out. Nessits. I am going back to the library. Like I said, I have to practice for my speech. Um, I have to write two more no cards. So after my, um, one class, I get out of 1:50, I'm gonna go back to the library and practice for that. Now I'm gonna figure out where to wear today. I think I'm gonna. I'm gonna be spoke. I think I'm gonna go with. Always getting stuck. I'm gonna go with. Dish dog and soup, I think. Or maybe this one. I'm not sure. Yeah, I think I'm gonna go with this one. I've worn this before. But it's a little chilly outside. So. We gonna dress warm. I hope I should get ready right now. Or should I wait? I think I'm gonna get ready right now. So get ready with me. I'm gonna go to the shower over here. In the morning. So, yeah. I'm gonna take this one. Hmm, this is so wet. I'm gonna put my earrings in. My hair is actually rough. Get to put my heater hat on. Stop cramps coming in. I'm gonna take my heater pad off the charger. I don't know if you're supposed to put this directly on your stomach because it'd be burning, but. So what I do. Turn it on. Yeah, it'll vibrate it too. So. The scent of the day is. This butterfly I told y'all. Five dollars we having a great. You get a great perfume for five dollars, baby. So yeah. It smells so good. Thank you. And I'm gonna make my bed. As you can see, it's looking a little rough. I'm actually supposed to wash today. I wonder if I should do that. Should I wait till Friday? Wait till Friday or wash today?
I'm sorry.
hey guys I'm actually about to lay back in my bed I'm not gonna lie I'm gonna have to go to 1 it's 10:53 gonna do my read 11:30 so I'm gonna catch up with y'all okay this is when I came back to the library um yeah I didn't put no music over this I'm just studying for my speech as you can see I'm writing on my note cards okay so guys it is later um still doing this speech y'all I present tomorrow um I have to let some of it in this book too this is my um PowerPoint that I did is basically so basically when I present tomorrow it's gonna look like this so basically I just have like four slides actually I'm gonna share this with her right now so when I present tomorrow I can just press it so yeah that that um I'm gonna practice with you guys as long as it's five minutes I'm gonna put five minutes on the clock I'm gonna put five minutes on the clock and read it um this is my rough draft this is my rough draft as you can see it's a lot but like I said I have no cards to like dim down the quality of the wording so yeah I'm gonna finish writing the end I'm at the end which is the clincher and call to action so yeah wait where was I now I wanna put my camera on this I'm gonna finish writing I better have outcomes creator I forgot where I was it is clear where am I yes as you can see I'm putting hard productive in people's side rather than simply an ideal yeah I literally forgot where I was what the hellie bro I'm literally confused oh that's cuz it's two pages girl see this is too much treated for the okay now I have to write my call to action I'm switching everything from that I wrote in this book to this so I won't have to like keep reading off to them I'm gonna set a timer and practice this five minutes yeah I'm nervous should I actually stand up hmm timer started now okay Nelson Mandela once said no one can really relax as long as there is extreme poverty in the world but we have actually changed this enough today I'm going to talk about and persuade my audience that social equality is not only achievable but also a good requirement for a happy society gotta make eye contact we are all impacted by social equality whether we are aware of it or not all of us still have a part to play in the building in building a society that is fair I will discuss the importance of social equality today and how we can have an equal opportunity to achieve in the future people in the future people are impacted by social equality every single day it's not something we hear about in the news I've seen studies how differences in opportunities income and education may affect a person's destiny also I've witnessed firsthand how these problems manifest in society which increase my desire to comprehend and resolve them social equality still limits possibilities of people of color despite progress and it's our responsibility to correct these injustice communities with lower incomes suffer long term cons long term consequences due to unequal access to high quality education the growing gap in wealth makes it more hard for those from poor families to gain finished stability many people continue to experience social and cultural bias which limits their access to opportunities 2015 world happiness factor assessment countries with lower leads levels of social and economic equality usually have happier populations these cultures place great value on justice acceptance and equal opportunity making sure that everyone has the means to thrive and have a satisfying lives have satisfying lives regardless of background it provides that everyone no matter their background has equal access to opportunities resources and rights we must try to provide social equality for everyone if we are able to create a joyful and peaceful society it is a principle that requires what the hell I won't get tongue twisted that requires to every person group in government to take action rather than just a peaceful society what rather than just rather than just what a peaceful society what I got these mixed up rather than just oh peaceful society rather than simply an ideal in conclusion a happy society must have social equality which is both possible and righteous in nature I read this one bro people have better health outcomes greater social bonds and less stress when economic gaps are reduced it is clear that social equality is an important part of productive and peaceful society that's where rather than just an ideal in conclusion a happy society must have social equality which is both impossible and righteous in nature there we go what rather than just oh that one go for that one a possibility together we can create a future based on injustice injustice on justice respect in I can't read my own handwriting bro in oh share prosperity by supporting equality fairness in building a society where everyone 41 seconds had the chance to prosper how many seconds thirty seconds but okay I gotta get these cards sorted out pretty good and I gotta be better with making my own eye contacts can't just read off the card you know I have evidence to back my speech up that's what the PowerPoint is for so yeah just get my cards together cuz that was just that just scared me y'all unpacked it okay okay two correct okay two opportunities background usually have happier what yeah cuz these are um to correct these injustices many background for everything is a possibility this is all wrong see hope I don't get toasted up tomorrow bro cuz this quality for actually hard reading off the back rather than just what rather than just what pray for me for tomorrow gang I just not I just I cannot get mixed up tomorrow like these are order by cards today I'm gonna talk about y'all impacted by I've seen studies how to what they are about to switch to correcties and justice right stability six really playing um mix mix with these cards bro okay I'm gonna practice it one more time opportunities equality usually have a background okay this is why I'm getting mixed up to collect these injustice rather than just a possibility okay this is where I'm getting mixed up so these I'm gonna have to switch these two cards when I'm reading cuz it says rather than just a possibility together we can just create a future based on injustice respect showed what shared I really cannot read my own handwriting where everyone share that in just a possibility rather than just okay I'm gonna have to switch these two cuz this don't make sense yeah cuz this one go on the end this one yeah I cannot read it like okay I'm gonna try one more same one more time for the full time five minutes on that clock let's go Nelson Mandela once said no one can really relax as long as there is extreme poverty in the world but we have actually changed this enough today I'm going to talk about and persuade my audience that social equality is not only achievable but also a good requirement for a happy society we are all impacted by social equality whether we are aware of it or not all of us still have a part to play in a building in society in building a society that is forever I will discuss the importance of social equality today and how we can have an equal opportunity to achieve in the future people are impacted by social equality every single day it is not something we hear about in the on the news I've seen studies how differences in opportunities income and education may affect a person's destiny also I've witnessed firsthand how these problems manifest in society which increase my desire to comprehend and resolve them social equality still limits possibility for people of color despite progress it is our responsibility to correct these injustice communities with lower incomes term consequences unequal as access to high quality education the growing gap in wealth makes it more hard for those from poor families to gain firsthand stability many people continue to experience social and cultural bias which limits their ac their access to opportunities 2015 world happiness factor assessment countries with lower leads of social and economic inequality usually have happier populations these cultures place great value on justice acceptance and equal opportunity making sure that everyone has the means to thrive and have satisfying satisfying lives regardless of the background it provides that everyone no matter their background has equal access to opportunities resources and rights we must try to provide social equality for everyone if we are able to create a joyful and peaceful society it is a principle that requires to every person group in government to take action rather than just a possibility and then I'll read this one last cuz I said it's not in the right place so people have better health outcomes greater social bond and less stress with economic gaps reduced that social equality is an important part productive in a peaceful society rather than simply an ideal in conclusion unhappy society must have social equality which is both possible and righteous in nature okay I got one minute left y'all I need this minute to run out should I write some more together we can create a future based on justice respect and show aired prosperity by supporting equality and fairness and building a social society where everyone had the chance to prosper okay let's let me put on fake claps and I actually have one minute left so I think I read too fast or I didn't write enough so let's put on some fake claps bradable 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 okay guys time done I think we gonna waste the speech plus my PowerPoint we gonna waste the speech so I'm gonna talk to y'all tomorrow and let y'all know how it go cuz I've been studying for this all week bro and if I don't get a good grade I know something I know some I know something I know something so yeah we don't see who be kicks We gonna see who we kiss. So. Can I probably use the other? Don't you well like gentle giants?